Okay. I'd like to call this December 1st special meeting to order. Plage of the Legions.
Recording in progress.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruein?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Let me, I didn't detect your audio, Councilmember Wong. I do see you, but we want to make sure that your audio is functional.
There he is.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
And Mayor, I just want to announce that Councilmember Wong is participating remotely this evening, and so I will be requesting roll call votes from the council for all, any council actions. And additionally, Councilmember Wong, I will rely on you to notify us of any members of the public wishing to speak at your remote location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we don't have oral communication today since it's a special meeting. We would go straight to item one, which is an amendment to fiscal year 2526 fee schedule to establish fee for ministerial two-lot urban lot split applications. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I see Assistant Director of Community Development Luke Connolly walking up. We were in the middle of the presentation at the last meeting, so we'll pick it up where we were.
Okay. Thank you, Tina. Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I will try not to break Zoom this time as we get through this item because I think we largely had gotten there. I'm just going to be really brief. Last time there was no visual presentation just because of the nature of the topic. But what's being proposed would be a new fee for what we would call ministerial urban lot splits that traces its origins back to Senate Bill 9, which went into law in 2022. Prior to that time, all subdivisions were discretionary actions, so this created a streamlined process to encourage additional development in single-family neighborhoods. The city did not get any lot split applications in the first two years that it was in effect and actually didn't approve any until 2025. So during the time that our fee schedule update, which I think was finalized in May of last year, while that was going on in '23 and '24, we had no direct experience with this application type. So the fee was included typically with parcel map fee. Parcel maps cover up to four lots. So this naturally fit into that category. The fee for a parcel map currently is a little over $30,000. Our fees are really based on the staff time that is spent processing the application, which is how things should be. And what we've had a chance to go back and look at now that we have had a number of the lot split applications is that the ministerial process, which is largely going through a checklist, has resulted in a lot less staff time being spent, about a third. So instead of a $30,000 fee for a parcel map, which remains discretionary and is up to four lots, staff is proposing for the ministerial lot split a fee of about $10,800. So that is based on the staff time spent to process it. That sums up pretty much what I said last time, and I'm happy to answer any questions as long as Zoom stays with us.
Okay, good sign, it's not broken yet. So anyone has questions?
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Thank you for continuing where you left off last time. Just a quick question, how many SB 9 lot splits applications have you received so far?
Thirteen and six have been approved. So there were two that came in in 2024, and we've had 11 this year. So like I said, the first couple of years, it may have just been that this was a new process. We also had Senate Bill 450, which streamlined SB 9 even further. That went into effect the beginning of this year. So that could have had an effect as well. We're not sure why we didn't get any applications the first couple of years. Could have just been the newness of the process.
But you did say you got something in 2024.
2024, we received two applications, correct. And we've gotten 11 this year, so 13 total since this process has been created.
So would they charge the higher fee?
Yes. Right now, these are being treated as parcel maps, which, you know, has a more extensive process and will go to a public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently have no request to speak on this item. Anyone wishing to provide comments, please submit your request.
So no request, then let's bring it back to the council. Anyone would like to make any comment? If not, maybe we can entertain a motion.
I'll move the staff recommended item.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Wong, would you like to make any comment?
Um, yes, I was trying to second it.
Yeah? Oh.
Seconded it.
Okay. Okay, great. So then let's just vote.
Councilmember Fruein?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now let's move on to item two, City Manager's First Quarter Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2025 to '26 Budget Modification. We have some decreasing of appropriation and increasing revenue. I won't read that. Okay, thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For the first quarter item, I have Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, and Tony Oase Anderson, Acting Budget Manager, who will be presenting the financial report. This report covers changes to the budget for the first quarter and makes recommendations to council on budget adjustments. There are no updates to the forecast in this report, and I will turn it over to the team here.
If someone from video could, I was sharing, I think it's about to go. There it is. Well, good evening, city council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor. As City Manager Karpur mentioned, I'm Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. And with me this evening, I have Tony Oase Anderson, our Acting Budget Manager, to present to you our fiscal year 2526 First Quarter Financial Report. This presentation was originally slated for November 18th, so apologies, we did not update the PowerPoint, so it still has that date versus the December 1st date listed. With that, let's jump right into the presentation. On the agenda this evening, we have how we ended fiscal year 2425. We also will cover where we are as the first three months of the fiscal year, so a first-quarter update. We'll also go over recommended budget adjustments being made by staff as part of this first-quarter report, and also cover any recommendations and next steps. So jumping right into how we ended fiscal year 202425. Are you guys hearing that? That might have been my fault. Apologies, okay? We'll try to get right back into it. This is covering just how we ended for the general fund. As a reminder, we generally focus most of our presentation for any of our quarterly reports on the general fund. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is it's the city's largest fund. It's also a tax-supported fund where we have the most discretion on how to use those dollars. The first quarter financial report, however, does include updates on all other fund types. Again, we just don't specifically cover them in this presentation. We have good news for how we ended the previous fiscal year. So I'm going to ask you to ignore the top line for just a second, the 166.1 million, but our fiscal year 2425 revenues in the general fund materialized at $115.4 million. Our actual expenditures came in at $99.6 million, meaning that we had a positive change to fund balance of $15.7 million. Now, if we go back and focus at the 166.1 million, that's where we ended fiscal year '24 or began fiscal year '25. When you take that 166, you add the 15.7 to it, you get our fiscal year 2425 year-end fund balance of $181.8 million. This is across all fund balance classifications. And so, sorry, before we get on to the first-quarter update, what was driving the bulk of that increase is really related to our decreased expenditures, mostly driven by our salary and benefit costs that were down lower. On the revenue side, we saw increases across almost all revenue categories, but with the largest being in our investment earnings due to mark-to-market changes that were made as part of the fiscal year. So with that, let's jump into where we are as a first quarter. Again, looking specifically at the general fund, actually, this one's going to look at all the funds altogether. And you can see, we have the first column here is the fund type. Then we go to what the adopted budget was, any carryovers, encumbrances, adjustments approved by the city council in the first three months or the first quarter of the fiscal year, and then our fiscal year '2526 amended budget. So with that, when we're looking at these items, oops, sorry, a little too fast to go back. So our carryovers in the general fund are really mostly driven by dollars related to the rise. So those are dollars that we, as they continue to be used, we'll kind of remove those off, but while the project is still in play, those dollars, both revenue and expenses, get carried over. The next larger item is related to our special revenue and our capital project funds, and the bulk of these are really related to CIP projects. So CIP projects are budgeted with the whole project being budgeted upfront, and as the project continues up until completion, we carry those dollars over year after year. So with that, you can see that our fiscal year '2526 amended budget, not including the adjustments before you this evening, totaled $223.8 million. Now focusing a little bit more on the general fund, looking first quarter of last year compared to first quarter of this year, the general fund had total revenue of $9.2 million, which is 1.9 million, or 17% lower than last year. This decrease is primarily due to revenue categories for sales tax and other financing sources that are offset by the use of money in property. The decline in sales tax is due to the city not receiving the typical advanced disbursements from the CD TFA as part of a previously reported settlement agreement. The city expects to receive its fiscal year Q1 true-up payment in mid-November and anticipates returning to a regular distribution schedule starting in Q2 of the calendar year, so that's October to December of 2025. And staff anticipates meeting or exceeding our current sales tax projections. Other financing sources is lower due to revenues received from the burn property transaction in the prior fiscal year. And lastly, use of money in property, as we've discussed a little bit earlier, is higher due to increased investment earnings, and we anticipate that our year-end investment earnings are going to align to our projection. So with that, looking now at expenditures, where we are as of the first quarter, looking again at first quarter last year compared to first quarter this year, our expenditures are 5.2 million or 20% lower than they were in the prior fiscal year. Actually, higher, I have that typo on here, the numbers, were actually $5.2 million higher than the prior year. We're going to go in and highlight some of these categories, not all the categories. There is a write-up for each category in the staff report. So first, we're going to highlight our transfers out, which is trending higher than last year by about 3.2 million or 44%. And this is primarily due to an increase in transfers to the Capital Reserve to meet the reserve, minimum reserve funding levels, and the restart of the annual transfer out to the Capital Reserve Fund. Contract services is trending 1.6 million higher than last year, or 24%, and this is primarily due to the timing of expenses for the city's law enforcement contract with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. To provide some context, for fiscal year '2425 first quarter, law enforcement contract invoices corresponded to July and August of 2024, whereas September invoices were paid in October of 2024. In fiscal year '2526, first quarter law enforcement contract invoices correspond through July to September. So you get three months in this year, but last year we only had two months built. Moving on to kind of what we expect in terms of impacts to fund balance based on this first-quarter report, as you can see, we like to show the classification of fund balance. So fund balance in the general fund is broken out into these different categories. We start with fiscal year '2324 actuals. So there you see the 166.1 million, which we talked about on our second slide in the presentation. We have our '2425 unaudited numbers there. You can see that fund balance is up at 181.8, also corresponding to one of the first slides that I showed you. Then we're looking at our first quarter, so at adopted budget, we make our best guess on where we think we're going to end the fiscal year, and then our first-quarter projection is making an update. And you'll see this number is going up to 183 million, and that's taking into account the adjustments that have happened through the fiscal year, three months of the fiscal year, along with the updates from our year-end close. So that 15.7 million, and that other little bit of a difference is based on adjustments that we've made for the first, the first three quarters of the year. So all in all, good news, our fund balance is looking healthier than it has been. Again, that was mostly related to how we ended the prior fiscal year and the strong investment earnings as well. Jumping into the proposed first-quarter budget adjustments, the good news here is that overall, we're looking to decrease expenses across most of the fund categories. So if we jump in looking at this by fund, overall, in the, overall, we're asking for an increase in revenue of $503,628. We're asking to reduce expenses by $674,221, resulting in an increase to fund balance or retained earnings of about $1.2 million. In the general fund, you'll see we're asking for increased revenue of $265,826, offset by expenses of $195,316. So seeing that positive of the $461,142 in the general fund. I wanted to jump in so you can kind of dig into a little bit about what we're asking for dollars for. I'm not going to cover each of these categories, I'm going to try to hit the highlights. Again, for anybody watching at home, the staff report does go into detail for each of these requests. General fund revenues that I mentioned earlier are recommended to increase by $265,826. This primarily due to revenues from planned review services for the Toll Brothers site. Expenditures are recommended to decrease by $195,0316 due to a reduction in the cost allocation plan or cap expenses. This will align expenditures with updated cap modeling. Offsetting increases include planned review services for the Toll Brothers project, 4th of July expenses that were missed as part of the final budget. That means that these were not added to the base budget, even though council had already voted to add those dollars back, so we want to add those back now. And then $200,000 for traffic data collection per council direction to collect citywide data. In the special revenue funds, expenditures are recommended to increase by $571,982. Actually, I think that's a reduction, sorry, they're expected to decrease by $571,982, again, due to the cap reallocation and the defunding of two CIPs, McClellan Road Separated Bike Phase 3 and Bollinger Road Corridor. These decreases are offset by increased costs for RV ordinance signage for oversized vehicles. In addition, signs will also be posted in Memorial Park for various items not related to the RV parking. In the capital project funds, revenue is recommended to increase by $244,316 due to the defunding of CIP projects, indistinct special revenue funds and savings in those projects transferring to the Capital Reserve. Enterprise funds are recommended to decrease expenditures by $29,689 due to the cap reallocation, and internal service funds are recommended to decrease revenues by $6,514 due to cap reallocation, and expenditures are expected to increase by $165,071 due to requests from the IT department for accessibility updates, control room upgrades that are PEG funded, which means this is not a general fund hit. These are funds that are specifically set aside for the use at public. Make sure, I thought I put the PEG funds. It's basically for public access television, so any kind of upgrades related to that type of equipment would be included here. Oh, it's for public education and government access, PEG. Cable television channels can be used to purchase of equipment, building facilities, and upgrading technology. In addition, the department is also requesting operational enhancements for small tools and equipment for new hires and equipment for the city council and city attorney offices. Again, overall, staff is requesting an increase to estimated revenues of $503,628 and a decrease to budgeted appropriations of $674,221, resulting in an increase in fund balance across all funds of about $1.2 million. With that, I will turn it over to Tony to take us through the last few slides.
Good evening. There are no requested changes to staffing as of first quarter. As for the City Manager Discretionary Fund, as of September 30th, 2025, it has only been used for property appraisal services for the property at 10480 Finch Avenue at a cost of $7,400. And each quarter, staff will continue to report on the use of this discretionary fund. Which brings us to our recommendations tonight. Our recommendations are to, one, accept the City Manager's First Quarter Financial Report for fiscal year '2526, and two, to adopt the resolution approving Budget Modification Number 2526-419, decreasing appropriations by $674,221 and increasing revenues by $503,628, resulting in a $1.2 million increase to unassigned fund balance. And at this time, we'll take any questions you have.
And before we hop into questions, I did just, sorry, I realized we didn't have it in the PowerPoint, it is included in the staff report. But one future challenge the city staff is waiting to get more information on is potential increases to the sheriff's contract that may have a significant impact to our budget and budget forecast. So I just wanted to make sure, even though it wasn't in the slides, it did announce that at this meeting. And now we can open it up to questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. Did we receive the mid-November true-up already from the sales tax advances?
We did, we received it, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday of the week prior, I want to say, and so it's actually coming in higher than we anticipated. We don't have detail on why it's coming in higher just yet, we haven't gotten that yet. So it will likely be something that we discussed at mid-year, but that's the reason why I did want to point out, we anticipate meeting or exceeding our sales tax numbers this year, just seeing that first full return come back.
May we have a ballpark of what that amount came in at?
I want to say it was about $3 million or so.
Okay, and so we were looking at the ACFER today, and it was showing that the city still owes $3.3 million to CD TFA. Is that, it's a settlement item. So are, do we still owe that amount because it kind of zeroes off the true-up? That's what I was kind of wondering.
I believe our last, our last payment had the, had our repayment complete, had, has been completed. So when we ended last fiscal year, we did still owe some funds, but I believe into the new fiscal year, we have, I think our first-quarter payment may have been the full payoff. I'm looking at Jonathan Odom School Finance Manager behind me. So I believe it was either the first quarter or the second-quarter payment that would have done the full payoff.
Good evening. So yes, you are correct, we ended last fiscal year with about $3.6 million owing as a liability to the CD TFA. Through the true-up of the first quarter, we earned 5.0, just over $5 million. So we will receive, or we did receive approximately $2 million the week before. So we've exceeded the liability and have started to receive remittances from CD TFA for sales taxes earned in the first quarter. And as you may know, there's a two-month lag or in arrears, so the payment that we receive in November correlates to earnings in September.
Okay, thank you. So that's good to know. A quick question on the library HVAC, the maintenance. Is that something that we'll get reimbursed for from the Santa Clara County Library District JPA, or is that strictly on us?
I don't believe so. I believe that's strictly on us, but I'm, I don't see Director Mosley behind me who can verify that for me. But if, let me go to that slide. We would have, I feel like I asked this question, and I was told no because I was looking for some offsetting revenue for that request, and I don't believe we have it.
Kind of a side question that perhaps I can get the answer offline. I'm wondering what the status is on the children's area library remodeling that the Santa Clara County Library District JPA is taking care of, and there was also going to be work on the fish tank. If I could get some answers on that offline while we're on the topic of the library, that would be great.
We'll make note of that to get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No questions? Okay, yeah.
Director Alfaro?
You alerted us to the sheriff's contract, the possibility of the sheriff's contract being significantly higher. Do we have, so have you not budgeted anything for it, or have you, do you have like a hip pocket money that you've set aside for that?
Yes, so as you may recall, last year, we entered into a one-year extension into the sheriff's contract that gets us through June 30th, 2026. It's my understanding there'll be a new longer-term contract that will be brought before council that is expected to have significant impacts. We don't have solid numbers on that yet. I believe we're looking to bring that contract sometime in the wintertime. I don't really have an update on that. But, so we budgeted what we have for the current year. Our forecast does include some numbers based on the previous contract, so any changes to that are going to have, we'll have to update the forecast, and we'll have an impact to the forecast if it's different than what we currently have budgeted or what our escalators are for our current contract, which is CPI plus two.
So is that likely to be in this year's budget, or will it be in the '2627 budget?
It would be '2627 as the contract we have with the sheriff takes us through June 30th, 2026. Thank you.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Was it not recorded? Okay, so a question, I think we had our labor negotiation for the two unions that just settled in September. So those are included in this Q and update, right?
So the, the contracts that came before council in September would be, but our Cupertino Employees Association contract, I believe, came in October. So that number will be accounted for as part of mid-year, so two of the, the units are included. And then the CEA will true that up once we get to mid-year because that adjustment happened outside of the first three months of the fiscal year.
Okay. And then one of the chart has $200,000 for traffic data collection. Do we have some information on what exactly that's, is it just for the Dianza, or is it the citywide?
It's my, it's my understanding from the department's write-up that this was meant for citywide traffic analysis, so that they were done at several different locations throughout the city. I'm trying to see if I can.
So are we contracting with the firm, or are we installing data collection devices so we can collect those information?
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, we may need to pause for a second, we have lost audio
We have lost audio and public members cannot hear on Zoom. And also Councilmember Wong.
So we still have technical difficulty. Ah, let's reconvene the meeting. Where were we?
I believe, uh, Mayor, you had a question on the traffic engineering, the traffic data collection. So I have a little bit more information that was in the staff report. If it's okay, we feel kind of read off the staff report to get additional detail.
So the question was the 200,000 dollars for the traffic data collection?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, per the staff report, uh, the, uh, they're requesting additional appropriations for collection of traffic data along the arterial and collector streets throughout the city. When city council defunded the Bolinger Road Study, they had expressed an interest in collecting traffic data throughout the city. Staff has evaluated this request and intends to perform an engineering and traffic study to collect data for speed limits, as well as collect traffic volumes and turning movements at major intersections. The data, the data will also collect bicycle and pedestrian counts at key locations. This data will be used to inform adjustments to speed limits, as well as to provide important data for future transportation initiatives.
I know that. So the, it's, so this will be done in-house?
Uh, the request doesn't specifically state that.
Okay. Because I saw an email, I think someone, there, there was an email about, uh, trying, asking another city about what kind of device, devices, uh, uh, they are using to collect pedestrian, bicycle, and other counts. So we, that's okay. I can get that information later. Just curious if we are purchasing devices? That would be great because then we can install them. Hopefully it's mobile. We can get that count at different location as we need. Yeah. So just curious how that's being implemented.
Yeah. I don't have that information, but we can follow up, um, with Public Works to understand how they're, how they'll be using the 200,000 dollars specifically.
Mayor, I, I don't believe there's any equipment or anything purchased with this. This is just for the study to get the data.
Hmm, that means we are getting a consultant if it's 200,000.
The 200,000 is budgeted in a contract line item.
Let me see if Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works, can, um, provide more details.
Hello? There we go. Hi, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Sorry for making Christina suffer through that. Um, this is to hire consultants who will then put out all of the various, um, equipment that's necessary to, uh, perform these calcula, or these, uh, data collection. This typically involves putting tubes across, uh, streets, putting up various detection equipment that would, um, monitor speeds, uh, as well as various other aspects. The 200,000 dollars is just for the data collection. It's not for buying any equipment.
So for how long that will, if it's a consultant, then they would collect data for this one year only?
It would be for whatever the length of that study is. Um, they would look at various roads throughout the city. They would put up the, the, the necessary equipment for. It's typically anywhere from three days to a week, depending on the street. Um, it's usually in multiple directions. So it would be, yeah, my guess is it's a six-month process to, to collect all this data and compile it. And then once the data is collected, it needs to be kind of put in a database so that we can figure out what the 85th percentile for speed is, um, uh, collect the, the data, the number of vehicles, turning movements. It's quite a bit of, uh, data to collect.
I think often we have been asking about what's the data count before a project and after, so we know if there is any impact on. So if this is only six months, that means we actually, after that six months, we have a new project, we still won't know.
You'll have, uh, basically a point in time, um, which will give us, uh, that data. And then if we wanted to update that data, you typically want to look at doing that about every five to six years. More often, if you're concerned about heavy growth, maybe less often if things are a little more standard. But it's a, it's a pretty standard process to collect the data regularly. We're about due, maybe even a year over our typical timeframe for collecting data. So it's time.
You are saying, uh, we had collected data two, three years ago?
I think we collected data about six to seven years ago, and it's, like I said, we typically like to collect data every five to six years. We're kind of pushing that limit right now.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, any other questions? If not, we will go to public comment.
Before we do that, I do have the printout from the CD TFA. Wanted to be able to share it on the overhead projector. I know you can see it. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Perfect. So this is, uh, straight from the CD TFA's website. So we actually received this about two weeks ago. So you can see the print date is, I think we did this on, um, 10/17, 11/17. So it's listed up here. And what this shows that as of the third quarter of 2025, so third quarter is not, uh, March through June of 2025, it's a calendar year, third quarter. So July to September are corresponding with our first quarter. You'll see that, um, the, they have the 507, 5,713,000 here. You can see that number. This was the total we received. And this is prior to any sales tax sharing agreement. So this is kind of the gross amount we would get from CD TFA. The 3.2 million that Vice Mayor Moore alluded to in our ACFA. Um, this is that liability that we talked about. So you can see we received sufficient revenue in sales tax to have it completely offset the remaining payoff to the CD TFA. Then you also take out the administrative costs, which means we would have netted, um, again, prior to any sales tax sharing agreements, about 2.4 million.
Thank you. And let's go to public comment.
Mayor, we have one request to speak from a, a member of the public participating virtually. That is San R. Welcome, San. And next we would have Peggy Griffin.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. Uh, very quickly, on the, uh, 200,000 for the traffic monitoring, I would encourage you to ask staff to look at grant opportunities. I believe there are grants available from the California Office of Traffic Safety. There are grants available from Caltrans for traffic safety programs. HSIP is available. So I would expect the 200K should be recovered by grants. The second thing is if you're looking at the purpose of the study to be lowering your speed limits, this is very disappointing because really I would rather like you to focus on speeding cameras and red light cameras that will enforce the current limits. We do not need lower speed limits. In fact, I believe state law requires you to raise the speed limits if you find the speed limit is five miles per hour or more above the currently posted limit. So if the limits on corridors like Dianza and Stevens Creek are, let's say, 35 or 40, and the traffic's going 50, you are actually required to raise the limits, not lower the limit. So speed studies, in addition to something that should be offset by grant, is actually a double S word because you may, per state law, be required to raise the speed limits. What is more, uh, useful is to actually enforce using technology with speeding cameras and red light cameras. I just wanted to say that really quickly. I want to go back to the budget, and I want to point out that if you look at the use of money and property, and that is really, uh, something that you discount from the, from the total process because of, uh, mark-to-market and, and investments and so on, the real increase here has come from permits, and the increase in permits has come from multiple years of 10-plus percent increase in fees on us residents due to the cost recovery policy that was passed by the prior council majority. And I am requesting you repeatedly that this is extremely punitive on residents, and you need to reduce the fees, not increase fees. And this revenue increase really is not good news for the city. It is bad news for us residents because we are paying an unfair burden in addition to the property tax increases. And so I'm asking you to really look at, uh, locate your budget and understand that you have no increase in revenue. This is a cost prohibitive permit fee increase that residents are having to pay. You need to lower the cost recovery policy. You need to undo what was done by the prior council majority that was really an anti-resident council. That's what it was. They, they waived the crane lift fee and raised 10-plus percent multiple years on us, and you cannot allow that to continue. So please look at the cost recovery policy as you look at item three later on today. And, and the budget right now is not in a good shape, and you need to be looking at cutting headcount. And maybe we start with places where we don't really need projects, like the bike lane projects. Maybe that's where we really start to cut deep and look at reduction in headcount. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members, um, and staff. Um, I have several kind of like different items. One is when I look at Zoom, I'm on Zoom, and you put up something on the overhead, I can't read it. The numbers are fuzzy. Um, uh, Councilmember Wong and the numbers that, uh, Director Alfaro put up were side-by-side, but I could not read the numbers, and I can't zoom in to see them. Um, the, uh, speed reduction on Blaney Avenue, they only did south of Stevens Creek Boulevard, which doesn't make sense because north of, of Stevens Creek Boulevard is Collins Elementary School. It's heavily impacted, and yet they didn't reduce the speeds. So I don't get that. Anyway, um, and the CD TFA, um, audit, the way it was presented to the public, there was no penalty. We just didn't have to pay back anything. But from the numbers I'm seeing now, it appears that we are paying back something in the future. Basically, this year, we just don't get money. So I would request that in plain, simple terms, the city tell us what actually was decided. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay. Um, okay. Um, so Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have a quick question for Chad. Director Mosley, uh, with regards to the traffic study, um, if it, if it was going to be about reducing speed, wouldn't it be specifically an engineering and traffic survey that would be contracted for?
You are correct. When it comes to speed, you typically do an engineering and traffic study. Um, this 200,000 dollars is to do an engineering and traffic study, as well as collect, uh, turning movements and, uh, volume data as well. So it's kind of all that together. So it's really a engineering and traffic study.
Okay. Um, so, but we, uh, can we anticipate that it's, uh, going to be used then to lower speeds?
Wherever that data comes back that indicates speed limits should be lowered, they would be potentially lowered. Uh, again, when it comes to the, the speeds, you're looking at the 85th percentile. And if those speeds come in indicating the speed limit should be lower, we would be looking at that potentially. If it's indicating it would be higher, we'd be looking at that as well. I mean, uh, the MUTCD is pretty consistent on how you set speed limits.
Okay. Um, I am seeing that AB 43 allows local authorities with more flexibility to lower the speed limit after that, uh, survey is, um, provided, uh, allowing for the rounding down, uh, the speed limit and further reductions in areas with high pedestrian cyclist volumes, um, such as near schools. So.
And that would allow us to round it down an additional five, uh, miles per hour. That's it. It doesn't allow us to round it down, you know, 20 or anything like that. It's simply five miles per hour. And that's based on, uh, judgment by the traffic engineer, typically looking at schools. You might want to round it down, but, uh, we don't really have the ability to round up. It's only to round down.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so first I'd like to ask the question, I think Peggy asked about the CD TFA audit. Do we have simple language that we can answer? Do, did we have to pay back or not? And what amount do we actually, uh, don't have to pay back, or what amount we still have to pay back?
I'll defer to the city attorney on this as this was part of the settlement agreement.
Um, do, are we ready to answer that, or we can?
We're not ready to answer that at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So we can, maybe, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about, about that later. And, uh, I do have a question about, so I think the, I see the biggest issue in Cupertino is that the lights are not synced. If I drive in San Jose, either north-southbound or even east-westbound, the lights are synced. I hardly have to stop for a red light if I just go at normal speed. But in Cupertino, very often, as soon as I get off 280, I hit every red light, north from, from 280 down south. But if I'm on Stevens Creek, very often I also hit every red light. So would the study solve that issue?
We're going to get in some nuanced traffic engineering here, and I probably, I'm not the best person for that. Um, it's really going to depend on what time of day you're taking Stevens Creek or Dianza, and in what direction you're going. Typically, Dianza has a very heavy movement in the morning going northbound. Um, so if you are taking Dianza and you're going south in the morning, you are going to probably hit more red lights than if you're going north because we have more cars moving in the northbound direction in the morning. Flip that around to the evening, we have more cars moving in the southbound direction. So those traffic lights are timed to enhance the progression going southbound. You can't really allow them both to happen at the same time.
When I hit the red lights, it was when I was trying to get to council meeting on time. So it was in the afternoon, and, uh, I was hitting all the red light. Councilmember Wong complained the other day, he was trying to rush to get here also for council meeting. He was hitting hot red lights too. And the San Jose I was talking about, it was morning rush hour when I was going to work. So.
And we can look at that again. Uh, keep in mind, the traffic signals from Homestead down to Lozaneo are all on adaptive traffic signaling. So it's actually monitoring traffic in all directions. We do have a project that's currently in the works to bring adaptive traffic signaling all the way down to Bolinger Road, which should help align that. But keep in, keep in mind, there are a lot of cars that use Dianza as a cut-through, going from 280 down to 85. And that's, that's part of the problem.
So my question is, really for the study, with the study, would we be able to have some idea like how many red lights people hit, or how slow or fast it is to actually use our arterial streets?
So this data would be strictly for volume collection and speeds. Um, there are other, um, engineering aspects with respect to led, red light timing. A lot of that work we do do internally. Every once in a while, we bring in an outside person who's very versed on that, to have them look at it, to provide some efficiencies. We did that for Stevens Creek about four years ago. Um, I'm not sure when the last time we did Dianza was. But this, this would provide data that would help us with that timing, but it wouldn't modify the timing itself. This would just be data collection to allow some better decisions.
Yeah. So at least we understand if there is an issue, right? I mean, my personal experience is just one data point. I'm just curious, is there a data study where we can see that there is actually, people are taking that much time to go through Dianza, then?
Yeah. And we have done, um, progression timing. We, we did that, um, back in December of last year during rush hour on the southbound direction during peak hour. It was taking, uh, approximately eight minutes to get from Homestead to, uh, Bolinger. Um, so that means you are hitting a couple of lights. Um, we rechecked that timing again in, uh, I think it was January, February, and March. We're hitting about 8. We're hitting about eight minutes, but you're going to be hitting traffic signals during rush hour. There's just a lot of cars that are moving on that street.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah. So any other comments or questions? Oh, and the other question is, is it possible to get grant to cover this 200,000 speed limit? You're getting your exercise.
I'm not sure if we have grant funding for that. Well, we'll definitely look for it. Typically, the grant funding we see these days are for actual improvements being made. But there are some grants out there for studies, like we got the one for the ATP. I don't see why there aren't some for this. I'm just not aware of any at the moment. If this is approved, we'll be looking for grant funds to kind of offset those. We may be looking at Measure B if that's possible, SB 1, or other outside funds if available. But we'll look to see what's available.
So the grant funding for ATP could be used for this kind of study?
I think so, but I'd have to verify all the information. The SB 1 funds and the Measure B funds are very specific. I'm not sure if it's for data collection as it is more for planning, but we'd look to see what's available. For pretty much every project we do, we look to see if there's grant funds available. We understand the budget crisis we're in and we want to try and maximize our dollars.
Thank you. Your department has been really great at getting grants for different study. Thank you. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Fruin.
So at the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, we recently looked at their CMP monitoring report, and I requested that they look into providing the ADT, the Average Daily Trips, for the locations that they monitor. And they were going to look into that because we're paying them essentially to provide this report for us. And if we can have VTA providing some of this data on a regular basis, I think it would be very helpful. But because all they're providing really is the level of service. And I was explaining there that, you know, you can't really tell the flow of traffic, whether it's a 10-lane intersection or a two-lane intersection, both of them at level of service C. And when we're looking at making really expensive decisions about where new transit would be, that we can't make it with that small amount of data. So if there is some way that we can be working with VTA and the other committee members were also interested in this data once I explained that, just like you said, we don't have anything from after 2018. It's all really old data. So if there could be something there with us working with VTA so that they're providing it, that would be great.
And we'll look into that. I know that VTA has limited data in Cupertino. They're looking mostly at their bus routes, which are not extensive here. But we'll look and see what kind of data they have when we go to collect that information.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fruin?
Mine is quick and it's more a compliment. Every year, every quarter, that we have either the budget itself for an update like this, your team comes back with, I think, most of our questions pre-answered in the presentation. And I think that has to do a lot with your own willingness to talk to each of us individually and do briefings, and I think it makes for a better presentation and it's much clearer for the public. So thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I actually have one more question still. So looks like our budget outlook looks good at this point. But then we will be adding the other labor negotiation and potential a big increase in law enforcement contract. So whether at the end of the year, our budget will be positive or negative, we still are not sure, right? Because I remember we begin in the budget, it was like $1 million deficit.
So given how we ended the previous fiscal year in such a positive position, our forecast builds off of prior year actuals and does trend analysis to kind of forecast where we're going to be in the future. So even with, when you include all of the adjustments through the first three quarters and include the adjustment for our CEA group, the forecast that we kind of reran still looks positive into the out years. We won't really know the full impact of any increases to the sheriff's contract until we understand what those numbers look like. That's not only kind of the base year, but how increases might look in the future. So depending on what that looks like, it's going to really play into whether we have a positive or not so positive outlook. And our goal is, as part of that contract that comes, when the contract comes through, is that we'd likely make as part of the fiscal impact some sort of update to the forecast and what that might look like and then have a more robust discussion as part of our mid-year financial report.
Great. Thank you. We can entertain a motion you would like?
Thank you. Moore, I move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Should we go?
Yeah. Okay. So, sorry. Let's go to item three. Review the first quarter update of the city work program and make modifications with items from the future agenda list requested by council members, so-called TBD list. So we have been having this quarterly consideration of TBD. So now we kind of combine that with the quarterly update with the work program. So we can prioritize them together. That's, so City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as Mayor mentioned, so there is a TBD list that we keep and bring to council quarterly. These are agenda items, future agenda items that, you know, any two council members can request to be added. And typically, we bring those or add those to an agenda, depending on staff capacity or, you know, between the mayor and city manager when we set the agendas. This was also a time for us to look at the work program quarterly update. And, you know, there are items on the TBD list that there is an interest from council to consider potentially moving it to the work program, city work program list. So it's a timely discussion. And we provided detailed attachments for the most updated TBD list as well as updates on the work program item. We're looking for a council direction in terms of what are the items that could potentially move from the TBD into the work program item because of either scale or importance. And then I will take feedback from you tonight and sort of clean up the work program list and go from there. But for the discussion piece, I think it'll be helpful to go through the items on the TBD, especially those that we've expressed an interest that could potentially be placed on the city work program. I do have our senior management analyst, Astrid Robles, who keeps the dashboard and the work program progress updated on the website. She'll run through some, just a few key projects, and then we'll turn it over to council for discussion. Astrid?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Astrid Robles, and I'm here to go over the city work program dashboard and provide some updates. I do want to share my screen here to show you the city webpage. So if video can, I'm plugged in. There we go. Perfect. So the city work program webpage lives on our website here, and it has a lot of useful information in relation to the city work program. Here, you can find our current fiscal year '25-'27 city work program. It's listed here, and we also have all the background information here on how we got to that process. All of that is listed here at the front. Most importantly, this is where our dashboard lives. This is where anyone here can go and view the dashboard, which is updated quarterly. And further below, I keep archives of all previous work programs and past quarterly updates that you can come and view here for records. They're all posted here. Now, I did want to focus a little bit on the dashboard as that's the star of our show tonight. I like to view our dashboard on full screen, so I click here. And that takes us to the homepage here, which has brief updates on each of the items and cumulative information of all of our items. Here, you can click on an individual item, and then this blue see details button will appear. That's where you would click to see the thorough, you know, updated information that staff works really hard on every quarter. Here, you'll see narratives, dates, financial updates on the items that we have every quarter. Recently, we updated and added this new button, see details for other projects, just to make it easier to click through all the variety, all the 23 projects that we have on our list. And I don't want to go through each of them one by one, but I will highlight a few as the city manager mentioned. This first item, economic development for retail and small business, is council's top priority project for this year. Staff has been working very hard on various initiatives such as Restaurant Week and dine-out events, which are engaging local businesses and residents. For item two, Small Business Council and Economic Development Committee, this item is almost complete as the EDC has been restored and has held their first meeting in November and I believe are holding their next meeting shortly in December. Jumping over to item four, permit streamlining and simplifications. Staff are exploring industry standards and researching regional practices to identify ways to simplify the permitting process in the city. Item eight, staff is making good progress on enhancing senior services and bringing together a working group to review the gap and feasibility analysis. Item 10, I can happily say this project is complete. It was adopted in October and is in effect now as of November. Jumping over to item 15, the City Hall retrofit item. Staff are working on bringing this item to council, I believe, at the next council meeting in December. Item 20, active transportation plan. Updates on this item are provided to the Bike Ped Commission, the Planning Commission, as well as city council in November. Work is continuing with completion anticipated mid-next year. The Art in Public and Private Areas item, the Arts and Culture Commission made recommendations that were taken to the Planning Commission and then to council in October. And then the electrification study is another one that's almost complete. Staff are working on finalizing an info memo in December. And with that, that is just a quick overview of how to use our dashboard, where to go for information. These are updated quarterly, and the updates are posted on our website once completed. And I'm here for questions.
Okay. Anyone has questions on the current work program? If not, Councilmember Wong, you have a question? No?
I was going to make a suggestion for a project I keep hearing, given that we've heard some complaints about affordability in terms of our fees and given that we've seen some examples of disproportionate staff time being used for non-resident requests. I was thinking this could be the time to suggest a TBD project where we segment our resident and non-resident fee policy, especially for use of tennis courts or art facilities or other areas so that we know that we are making sure that our residents are getting a better deal and we're also able to make sure that there's a differentiation for being a resident. So I didn't know where to put that in, but it's something that I keep hearing from folks when we meet with them.
So would the staff would like to answer that? I believe we already have differentiation between resident and non-resident mostly.
So just to clarify, so Councilmember Wong, are you suggesting a new item or are you suggesting that we tweak one of our existing items?
I think with, given that it is an existing item, where we can actually revisit or actually clean up the non-resident resident fee differential and the preferentials for that, that would make a lot more sense. Take, for example, the tennis courts in Memorial Park. It's a great example where, you know, we have resident, non-resident, we should be prioritization for residents in terms of reservations versus non-residents. Same thing with the way fees would work. Charging non-residents' fees, for example, for pickleball would perhaps actually alleviate some of the issues we've been seeing with the court crowding as well as the disproportionate use of staff time to address those pickleball complaints and issues.
So it sounds like, I think, this is a common question. People keep asking how we distinguish, but I know it's different for different activity. Maybe an info memo so that we are aware, so we learn what's the current status would be the best first step. Okay?
Yeah, I think breaking it into pieces might be helpful because the way that you described, Councilmember Wong, it's a kind of a, you know, you'll be putting a lot of different things together. For example, can we charge fees if it's a public park? But we do have a fee structure in place that lists out separate resident and non-resident fees. So certainly, we can, you know, we can put it on TBD and I can do some research and provide an info memo to see which ones we will be able to change. There may be some conversation I might need to have with the attorney as well, you know, in terms of.
Right. Part one would be a review. Part two would really be an equalization or a justification of the fees. And part three would really be about preferential access for residents versus non-residents.
Okay.
And just for clarification, I don't know if that is a new project or it's something that works within what we have today.
Yeah, certainly. And if that's council direction, we can add that so we can bring the structure we do have in place now and kind of see what's, you know, what the market dictates in terms of fees.
Or could we refer this to Parks and Rec Commission to take a first look? I do know they get presentation from different department with percentage of resident and non-resident usage. Yeah. We'll talk about how to implement that. And first, I would like to take a question on the work, current work program that staff has just presented. Is there, Councilmember Fruin? So yeah, I hope to talk about TBD later because I do have questions on those dashboard. So could you bring up the dashboard for the economic development item?
Yes, I have it on my screen now. Video, could you please share? Thank you. All right.
Okay. Yeah.
Economic Development has two projects. This is the first one.
Yeah. So this is the first one. I know that there had been some progress made on Shop Local Restaurant Week. However, according However, according to the description that's in the work program. Could you zoom up the description?
Yeah, so the description is right here.
Yeah, so 1.1, streamline permitting process for small business. Oh, for the member of the public. If you find it's hard to read something on Zoom, what I usually do is I take a screenshot and copy it somewhere, then I can zoom in myself. But, okay, 1.2 is retention and recruitment of small, retail and small businesses. Explore option to support small and business startup feel empty storefronts and encourage entry of new forms of retail to promote revitalization. And then explore more themed events like Restaurant Week, which we have done great, and other festivals to bring vitality to Cupertino business and improve placemaking in the city and city's revenue stream. So, sounds like we have done bullet item, one of the bullet item. I would like to know through these quarterly updates, what is the implementation plan for the remaining three quarters to implement the described goal? Do we have that? I can take the update after the meeting. I hope that we do get a bit more detailed implementation plan for each of the item. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, mayor. And we were just bringing updates tonight, but I'm happy to bring, you know, or share implementation plan with you on some of these that you, yeah.
Yeah, I think the purpose is also, I think, we were surprised when the work program item for the Art in Lufi wasn't going in the direction I was expecting, but then I find out the description was kind of not clear. And then we didn't have this quarterly checking on what exactly, whether we have the same expectation, right? So I'm trying to see, okay, maybe we can improve that. Can you go to the next economic development item?
Yes. And I'll just add for this first item, we have updates broken down by 1.1, if it's related to the first part of the description, which is the streamlined permitting. And then the 1.2 is for updates related to the second part of this project.
Oh, okay.
Okay, second project.
I think you need to share your screen again.
I think I, can y'all see my screen?
Yes.
It was shared, and then now, okay, now it's there. Okay.
Yeah, so Small Business Council is 1.3, create a small business council, provide regulatory support. 1.4, restore the Economic Development Committee.
So we did 1.4. Just wondering, what is the plan for Small Business Council?
Mayor, this would be a good one to clarify, if we're going to talk about any clarification. What is the Small Business Council?
What does that mean? Yeah, maybe, I think Councilmember Wong proposed that, so you, the staff would like some clarification.
So in the item here, if you could see the final item, I believe that staff was expecting to create a subcommittee within the EDC to serve as the Small Business Council.
And that's our interpretation, so if that's what Councilmember Wong...
Councilmember Wong, is that what you have in mind?
It is in the right direction, but...
Or do you have something more in mind beyond a subcommittee?
I think the subcommittee will do for now. I think we need to let the committee figure out exactly what programs they need to run that will be effective, especially given the fact that we've got A250, we've got FIFA, we've got Super Bowl. But I think the, I think the subcommittee should have some discretion to figure out what's the right set of program.
Okay, so it's moving in the right direction, that's good. And can you show that page that's Arts in the Public place?
Yeah, so this is item 22, with the description being revisit municipal code standards for art in public and private development, including the standards in the municipal code and developing an art in Lufi policy.
Yeah, so this is one that we were kind of, I was confused about what exactly is being done. And then Arts Commission has made some recommendation. I think, yeah, that's okay. I think the update is okay. And another thing is the, there was a sign ordinance that has been on the work program since last year.
That one, mayor, we definitely would, could use some clarification.
Yeah. I think we, it has been on the work program since last year, and my understanding is there has been no progress, right? So maybe we do need to sync up on what exactly we expect, and do we still want to proceed in that original direction? Or maybe we should drop it? Yeah, so Director Fu, you have?
Yes, mayor. Ben Fu, Director of Development. The sign ordinance item originated from a desire to look at our political signage portion of the ordinance. So thus far, we've been waiting for an opportunity to collaborate with the city attorney's office for this particular item. So depending on the council's desire to continue to explore that particular item, we can come back with a, with a plan to have that. Also too is, if the council does want to move forward with this, we can, there's also other areas in the sign ordinance that we can update and then improve. So depending on what your desire is for this particular item, right?
So your understanding is this is regarding political signs?
I think, I believe when it first started, there was related to political signage.
Because my, my understanding is it, I think the council initially requested this because of the public storage project. The public, the sign facing public or not, or what angle that those...
Right, so that was, that was, I believe that was the second part of that. So, you know, depending on the clarification council which provide us, we can certainly focus on the item that you're talking about, the freeway-facing signage, and so look at how to update that section.
Yeah, and also I think the lighted window...
Right, exactly.
That's being used, the entire wall.
So we can separate those two, or we can combine them, or focus one over the other. So a little bit of clarification would be helpful, so we can add on the project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Mohe.
Thank you. Just wanted to add a little bit to, with regards to the sign ordinance. If, if this does continue on, so there is some concern about moving signs. And as the mayor's mentioned, we're seeing windows covered, completely covered over. And I don't know if there's some requirement when a business receives their approval that if they have a glass window, that they're supposed to not completely cover it with signage. And then lastly, the, the rules for a quasi-public zoned building appears to be that they can, even though some of these are next to residential homes, that they're following the commercial signage. And some, the issue there is that the frontage can be very wide, and that allows, enables the sign to then become really, really big in an area. So I would like to see that limited a bit. And we have seen some signage put in without having an approval, it seemed, which is another challenge, because it's already been constructed. So there's a few, few issues, and I think, I think some of these can be handled by speaking to the owners if they have put excessive signage up. So I'm not sure what part needs to have a new ordinance change versus what part can be negotiated with the owners.
Okay, Councilmember Mohe?
I just wanted to make sure we all remembered, at least I remembered, that the sign ordinance issue was postponed after the public storage issue was discussed, because there were no other sign issues coming up. So I remember at that time, there was some discussion that this was not a priority until another signed request came up. And I'm not sure it has. You know, I, I agree there should be a sign ordinance, but the reason why it's not a priority was because there was nothing as significant as the public storage sign issue.
Yeah, and I think that's helpful context, especially when we look at the TBD list in a little bit on what we want to bring over if there are, if there's, you know, council direction on things that we can either pause right now or clarify and narrow the scope that's going to help us take on new items tonight, so that's helpful.
Yeah, I think the intention is, before the next project come along, comes along, we have to modify our code. Otherwise, by the time they come along, it's too, it's too late. But then I do realize this is not really a high priority item, and I, maybe we should narrow the scope and do just what's necessary. But it seems we don't have the same understanding of even the scope, so... So that's something we need to really clarify too. Okay, any more, Councilmember Fu?
So to further complicate it, since we seem to have a very wide-ranging view of what this, this item was or could have been, that maybe the, the best thing to do is actually to go the opposite direction and undertake a sort of broad overhaul of our sign ordinance in general, because it seems like we have a lot of different potential concerns. And one of the things I want to make sure that we're not forgetting is we have all of these, these things we want to do with economic development. And, you know, if, if you're a merchant and you can't even put your, your sign on a wall, you're going to suffer a lot. And so I would want to make sure that, that we're doing a lot of outreach to our business community to make sure that we understand what sort of issues they've encountered in the course of getting signage approved, and that we're designing something that is easy for them to follow and, and build around as they develop their storefront. So one way or the other, that's something that I would like to see, and I think that our, our businesses would probably appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any more question? If not, we'll go to, oh, we still have the 2, 2BD. Yeah.
It's not so much a question, but a, but a request. When I'm over in OpenGov, if it's possible that the City Work Program could have its own pull-down tab so that we can go through them more easily for under expense type, because it's falling under, looks like it's falling under special projects. And I know that we're trying to move that into its own category, so this might require a little bit of a restructuring so that we can look at them more, more easily.
That's, I can look into that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's, I need, do I have a presentation for the TBD list? Or do we just want to quickly mention?
We don't have a presentation, mayor, but if you, if it's helpful, Astrid has it on the computer. We can pull it up if you want to look at it together. Otherwise, we provided the most recent TBD items. And in the staff report, I think there were a handful of them that, you know, that I've heard council members say that they want to be added to work program. So maybe we can just go through with them. If it's helpful, we can go item by item on TBD, trying to see what will be the most...
Don't think we need to go item by item, but maybe that's just ask first. Anyone has question on the TBD that you would like to clarify? This might be a good time, so... Vice Mayor?
Well, I'd like to clarify the process. So is the objective to decide which one of the TBD items that we want to, you know, basically make it through the gate? And if that is one of the objectives, second, are we trying to prioritize and reorder the, the 23? And is there any, is there anything about that list of 23 work program items that is indicating that one item is more of a priority than any, any other one? And when did we prioritize that?
Yeah, so, great questions. You know, when we, when we were doing the work program prioritization exercise earlier in the year, it's, it's, we did do a voting process, and everybody assigned points to it, so it's sort of prioritized. But once that list gets adopted as a work program, it's priority projects, period, for staff, right? I wasn't prepared to do another voting or prioritization tonight. The conversation I'm hoping we can have tonight is, you receive an update on the TBD list, which you, which is in front of you. You receive an update on the work program projects as of Q1. You know, and if there's any interest in picking out a few of the TBD items now, rather than just kind of leaving it on a, it will come back at the future date, for it to be added to the work program list, which means that there is, obviously, it's a priority item for staff. We will have dedicated resources. We will be providing regular updates, and you'll have visibility on the dashboard and things like that. That's the conversation we should focus on tonight. I have some information for us to balance that. So if we're adding items, I can tell you on the work program which ones we may be able to pause, which ones have made a lot of progress, which ones would, you know, we may be able to merge and things like that. So I'm prepared to have a little bit of conversation tonight. But I wasn't thinking of reprioritizing. We can certainly do that at another meeting, but right now I need some feedback from all of you.
Okay, thank you. One of the items, for instance, is to look at Stockelmeyer and Blech, and that's been in queue for a really long time. And so I, I would hope that it was, is getting towards the top and will be on a future agenda for discussion.
Yeah, and that item is actually a good example to pull out. So we can, we are ready to provide information to council on that, right? So we've done a kind of look at, okay, what are the options with this city property? With this city property, what is the condition of it, what's possible? So that's easy to provide as an info memo. But it's, when we go down the line, not, actually, we need to do this, and we, council wants to do, then it becomes more of a time-consuming project. So that's a really good example. Like we can, that's top a list. I'm ready to, you know, issue an info memo, I'm working with Chad on that. But how much work it's going to take, once we do identify a, an option for a city property, for example, that council wants us to follow, then that could be a little bit time-consuming, right? Depending on what we pick. But it's certainly ready to come forward to you as an info memo at the very, as a first step.
Okay, and I do have a clarifying question regarding the public outreach. Where would having sampling in order to get better data from our surveys, where would that fit in?
So, on the TBD, there is an item that, I think it might be the very, one of the last items that's added on our list that says public standard, establishing standards around public engagement, so we can make sure that there is some sort of outreach built in into every city project. What, you know, depending on which, like, what level we need to follow. But there's got to be some guidelines and standards, so we ensure we do that. That is on the TBD list that...
All right, thank you.
At it, 21, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I think we would do the prioritize or potential move around items after the public come in. I hope right now we just focus on questions that's in the TP, the items proposed, so we understand what's proposed. And I would like to start with item 17. That's the one on the future of BlackBerry from golf course. Farm Golf Course. I sent in a question, and an answer was provided in supplemental report, but that's not, that seems to misunderstand my question, because, because the answer says that a new description is in the supplemental report. So, but the supplemental report in item 17, that will be attachment D, is a description that kind of can, comes from the, one of the completed projects of the fiscal year 24, 25, because this, we have looked at the feasibility study for Blackberry Farm back in 2022. And I think the council had, I think there was a decision in July 2022 to do a minimum option. And then the staff added two projects for the minimum repair, yeah, the minimum repair option to the CIP future list. And so what exactly is requested by item 17?
Yeah, Mayor, so, I, I can, I can help answer that. And this may have been because, you know, probably because I wasn't clear on what we're doing tonight when I reached out to all council members. My ask was if anyone wishes to add anything that we want to consider to add it, but that was the extent of it. I didn't have any, you know, in-depth conversation. So the, these two, the 17 and 18, I think we can, you know, mark that this is done in the sense that I will provide an update. I actually have already provided an update to the council members that requested it, so we don't really need to consider these items to be placed on the work program.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, I agree.
Are you satisfied with?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. After we put it on the list, I had a conversation with the city manager about how to proceed, and a supplemental report seems to be the best option.
Yeah, but I do agree that it's not easy to find out the status of this project on the city website, because there is a very great, great final report on the engagecuppertino.org site, but people don't know this, that's where you have to look. So it would be great if the city website has more complete information, so people know. Yeah.
A quick thing to say on the city website, it uses a lot of, like, on October 17th, October 18th, and the year is not stated, so I'm sort of.
That's such good feedback. Point taken.
Yeah, that's great. And then so number 18 is, seems to be just an information request that really doesn't need a significant time. Staff probably can just provide an answer.
Yes, I will just.
So it doesn't need to be heard by the council, right? About the Blackberry Farm swimming pool, bid and permit process.
Councilmember Mohan, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm okay. And again, this is another item that I had a conversation with the city manager on.
Okay, great. Anyone else has question? Councilmember for it?
So I was hoping to get some clarity from the other requesters as to what the review of Memorial Park is. Is that to re-scope the existing specific plan, or is it something else?
Yeah, I do hope that we consider a minimal option for the memorial park, because I feel when the consultant reached out, everyone asked, what do you want to see in Memorial Park? People proposed all kinds of idea, and now we ended up with an $80 million project. That's probably going to be twice as much when we actually implement that. But that will take away the natural beauty of the park. I think we never were given a minim, minimal option to consider, so I hope to, to consider. Because usually we would give an option, A, B, C. A is this much, B is this much, C is a lot, right? So we can consider the options, so I'm hoping to have that.
Okay. And then the ballot measure on retail and rezoning.
So as we know, now we have one, two, three, four sites, or five sites of re, completely retail sites that's going, are going to be replaced by townhomes on Stevens Creek. And they are not required due to state law to provide any retail, even though our heart of a city plan does require 70%, 75% frontage retail. So that will break up our retail strip on Stevens Creek. And I find out Sunnyvale has adopted the rezoning ordinance to rezon mixed-use site, so a certain portion will be retail only, and that will help protect their retail frontage. So I hope to consider that. It doesn't have to be a ballot major.
Okay, all right. That, that answers my, my primary question, because I wasn't sure how a ballot measure would solve that.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I hope to have a start decision on. Maybe it doesn't need to be, just need a rezoning ordinance. But I do, that story, but ballot major, because I was wondering, would HCD be not happy with that? Maybe a ballot major might protect us. I don't know. So.
Got it. For, just for clarity, is the Sunnyvale ordinance in question a revision of the, the Village Center master plan?
I don't remember the name. They adopted that July 1st this year.
Uh huh. Yeah, that sounds, that sounds right.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then the protections for parkland?
Not to.
Tentatively it would be based off of 2016 Measure K from Milpitas. And theirs was a yes vote, was a vote in favor of requiring two-thirds voter approval for any effort to rezone parks. Parklands are open space to take effect, and it received 84 and a half percent vote. So it was a very, very well-supported ballot measure.
Okay. I think that's all my questions on other things that people have put on, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, Mayor, I think the only one I had was like, I did want to move item number 10 to off the TBD list if possible. And that was my, I am worried about loss of retail.
Oh, yeah. So I, yeah, I think part of this process I'm doing that together is maybe if there is something we think must be high priority for this year, then maybe we need to remove some items that's not as urgent from the work program, so we can get to the more urgent item. So that's why I, I thought let's consider those together.
Yeah, and I think councilmember.
We'll have that discussion later.
Councilmember Wong raised a, a good point in my mind that I should probably clarify here. So if you look under the recommendation or the council motion column on the TBD list, there's, you know, there's some staff recommendations that you will notice that say that staff recommends that this item is being, be, will, should be considered for the work program. So there are a few items on here, and Councilmember Wong, the item 10 is, we are recommending that it moves over to the work program.
Oh, I'm in agreement, so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have, I have two requests to speak virtually. I have two requests in community hall. One is a group request consolidating time for up to 10 minutes. There are six requesters, actually, so totaling approximately, let's see, three speakers, 19 minutes.
Okay, great. Maybe I should clarify this also, because many people did write to the council about the artistic bike rack at the memorial park. I responded to Kathy Yates and some of the people, but not all of the people who wrote in. What's on the agenda for the TBD list is consider forward-looking. In case we have a project like this, how, what should be the approval process? For example, it's artistic bike rack, should art commission be involved? And things like that. And from another item that I'm considering is, should anyone who donated some money be able to put their own logo on a city property? What's the process look like? Rotary club may be okay, what if it's some other entity? So there should be a, a clear process that not anyone who pays some money can, can brand a city property. That was the idea. And we are not really talking about removal of any already installed bike rack today. There is no plan to adjournize that, as this is for me, so, yeah. What's done is done. Yeah, so that's, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, so first we have Beck Poltrunetti, and then we have Kathy Yates for a group Anyone wishing to provide comments, please submit your comments in the next nine minutes. Are you attempting to connect to our left, the podium?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Beck Poltrunetti, Cupertino resident, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. So Mayor Chow, I understand what you've said, but as a resident, I heard a rumor that the city was considering removing the rotary racks, and this concerned me, as I care about biking. And so I would like to head off the potential of the city to consider this by stating that removing the rotary racks would be a serious misuse of the city's budget. They are already firmly mounted into concrete, just sitting there, providing utility to city residents. The city's budget should be put towards building new infrastructure, maybe road repair, maybe fixing one of the intersections that keep having car accidents, not tearing up existing infrastructure. Mayor Chow, you yourself said in a response email, and I quote, "The colorful fish bike rack looks lovely." If they look lovely, why remove them? Additionally, in the same response email, you said one of the reasons to be concerned about the bike racks was, quote, "There have been reports of seniors walking in Memorial Park getting hit by bikes," end quote. There have also been, as you may have heard, reports of cars hitting people walking. So while we are on the topic of destroying already existing infrastructure that facilitates dangerous interactions for people walking, I would propose that the city also removes every parking space in Cupertino, so as to prevent anyone in the city from getting hit by a car. Another point that you made in your response email was to quote again, "There have been children climbing on the bike rack." While we are addressing dangerous things that kids can climb on, I propose that the city should also remove, not necessarily in this order, every single tree, pole of any kind, play structure, fence, wall, staircase, ladder, garbage can, statue, monument, building with a decorated exterior facade, and tall chair, so as to prevent any child from climbing anything that could potentially cause a dangerous fall. The bike racks are fine as is, and you could just let them be, or you can waste the city's money destroying them. You know, things that are, as you so eloquently put it, lovely. You know, lovely things that serve the community. Your call. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beck. Next, we have a group request. So Kathy Yates will be speaking with Bill Furness, Louisa Roberts, Helene Davis, Jim Davis, and Jagi Shahani, ceding their time for a total of up to 10 minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and the council members. My name is Kathy Yates. I'm the current president of Cupertino Rotary Club, and I'm joined tonight by several members of the Rotary Board of Directors and the Cabinet and other rotarians that are in the audience. Our board and cabinet sent the council some correspondence over the weekend, expressing the concern about the potential for removal of the bike racks, which recent, which Rotary recently helped install around the city. Mayor Chow, I appreciate your reassurance to me and to others that the removal will not be under consideration. Six weeks ago, the council formally recognized Cupertino Rotary for our over 70 years of partnership between the club and the city, both of which were founded in 1955. We are proud of that history, and we appreciate the constructive partnership that we've built together. This most recent partnership to install six artistic bike racks took over two years to design, fund, and install, and involved a collaboration between many different groups, which include the Rotary Climate Action Committee, the Cupertino Bike PED Commission, the Rotary Board of Directors and the Cabinet, the Board Directors and Officers of the Cupertino Rotary Endowment Foundation, the City's Directors of Parks and Rec and Public Works, and the City Departments of Parks and Rec and Public Works, as well as individual rotarians and citizens. Some might wonder what a Rotary Club is and why we initiated this project. Rotary is a nonprofit, apolitical service club that exists simply for the purpose of strengthening our community. Founded in Chicago in 1905 as the first service club in U.S. history, Rotary has since grown to have an international presence of 45,000 clubs in over 200 countries and a world-renowned charitable foundation. Each club is formed and run by local residents to reflect the community's local personality, needs, and interests. We recognize that in diverse communities like Cupertino, one group's interests might conflict with those of other groups. Indeed, our own club's membership reflects the diversity of our community, and we consciously work to maintain it that way. So in Rotary, we use what we call a four-way test to guide us to a workable balance for our community as a whole. We ask ourselves, what is the truth? What is fair to everyone concerned? What builds goodwill and strengthens relationships? And what is beneficial to all members of the community? These questions guided us during the bike rack project. During the two years of project planning, there were multiple public hearings, detailed MOU negotiations between the city and Rotary about our mutual responsibilities and commitments, and consistent interaction to ensure that Rotary was strictly adhering to all requirements. The installation of the six racks was completed in September of this year, and our club has received much favorable commentary from residents about how much they add to the community. But today's agenda item implies that all of this collaboration and interaction was inadequate to allow for appropriate input from residents and responsible parties. We believe the record speaks for itself. Questions about safety, appropriateness of design, and specific locations for installation were repeatedly discussed. As we collectively worked through disagreements, such as when the Department of Parks and Rec had concerns about two locations proposed by the Bike PED Commission, representatives from Rotary, the Bike PED Commission, and the Parks and Rec and Public Works Departments met at each location to identify rack placements on which everyone could agree. An area of sensitivity for some is the Rotary logo on the racks, and the question is, should city council specifically approve the use of an organization's logo on something that is or will become city property? We think that's a fair question, and it is important to clarify when city council consideration is required versus when staff discretion is sufficient. Our club will of course comply with whatever decision is reached, but I want to say in advance that it would be a significant change in our partnership if the city council adopted a policy opposing attribution on projects that involve significant contributions of resources from Rotary. For 70 years, we've led and funded service projects designed to beautify, strengthen, and enhance the community, and we always strive to publicize our involvement in that work, as do virtually all other service clubs, such as Lions, Kiwanis, and Elks Clubs. So I hope that if an additional checkpoint is added to service projects for the sake of information, that action does not become a barrier to those projects ever coming into being. We believe that would be a substantial loss to the Cupertino community. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Cupertino, thank you for your consideration. We remain committed to being constructive, reliable partners in service to our shared community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. May I, could I ask a question? So you mentioned this project was initiated by Rotary Club?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned this project was initiated by Rotary Club.
We've got some additional comments that are going to come from the other speakers that'll explain a little bit more about how the project is going.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Great.
Yes, Mayor, I actually, uh, I see that there were additional requests to speak in this packet, and so we have another group request, followed by an individual speaker, followed by another group request, totaling, so this is up to 10 minutes, and three minutes for the other speaker, and another 10 minutes, so another 23 minutes. So we have Steve LaFevere, 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 accompanied by Alissa Sakis, Dina Sakis, Maury Okamuto, sorry, apologies, Kearney, and Peter Troop. Welcome. So you have up to 10 minutes.
Great. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. So my name is Steve LaFevere, and I chair the Climate Action Committee for Cupertino Rotary, which was responsible for the implementation of the artistic bike racks. I've been a resident of Cupertino for 34 years, and I'm joined here by several members of our Climate Action Committee. The Climate Action Committee's charter is to implement projects that focus on carbon emissions reduction, helping nonprofits and those in need. Over the past few years, we've completed nine solar installations for nine nonprofits, e-bikes for Deansa students to lower commute costs, Community Harvest Initiative that harvests fruit from residents on a monthly basis and donates to WVCS, Hunger at Home Monthly Food Distribution Volunteering, a regenerative farming demonstration site, and sponsorship of annual FUHSD Earth Day. We embarked on the Artistic Bike Rack project with goals of reducing carbon emissions, promoting cycling, and beautifying Cupertino parks and city with colorful artistically-designed racks. Additional benefits include reducing traffic and parking congestion, improved air quality, and community health. The initiative was funded through Rotary fundraisers and annual climate action budget. In all, the project cost roughly $30,000. It would have cost significantly more if the, the 320 hours of volunteer times that Rotary used to install the racks. In regards to the bike rack vendor, we identified the vendor, Diro, due to the chair of the Los Altos Public Arts Commission. We used Diro for installation of racks in that city. Diro has manufactured bike racks for dozens of Rotary groups across the U.S. and for public companies such as Google. They are beautiful, well-made, sturdy, and safe bike racks that stand the test of time. The rack designs incorporate safety aspects such as domed angles, sturdy anchoring and welds, and thick steel tubing. So the installation locations were identified and settled upon with collaboration with the Parks and Rec, Bike Ped, and Public Works. These teams identified and prioritized high traffic areas where the artistic bike racks would be most impactful, and placed in locations where utilities, traffic, et cetera, would not be impeded. So in closing, please be mindful that Cupertino Rotary collaborated, cooperated, cooperated, and closely followed the city of Cupertino process for designing, locating, and installing the racks. I respect and understand that you have process improvements to consider. With that in mind, I request that you do not retroactively impose the process changes on this initiative, nor remove the racks from our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and group. Next, we have Seema Linskog. Welcome, Seema.
Can I show something?
You're sharing? Okay, yes.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I am a planning commissioner for the city of Cupertino, but today I'm speaking as a rotarian and as the person who has led this project for the Rotary Artistic Bike Racks for the past two years. From the salmon in Wilson Park to the coffee mug to the shark that you see in this photo, the Rotary bike racks have been sparking joy everywhere they've been installed, and I want to share with you just how much our community loves them. When we were out installing these racks in the 320 volunteer hours that Steve mentioned, many residents walked by, and most of them would stop to admire the racks and to say thank you. Parents with small kids, seniors out on their daily walk, cyclists passing through, soccer players, all of them paused to tell us how fun, how whimsical, and how welcoming these racks felt to them. At the annual Rotary Fall Fest, which is the picture that I put here, the shark rack was so full of bikes, it looked like it was swimming in a sea of wheels. Without anyone telling them about it, cyclists of all ages found the rack, intuitively understood its purpose, and tied their bikes to it. Families were taking photos with it, and throughout the day, people were sending me pictures of the rack, telling me how much they loved it. In the weeks since, we've been getting more photos of residents randomly posing with the racks when someone saw them and felt a spark of delight that they wanted to share with us. These aren't just bike racks. They are pieces of functional public art. They signal that Cupertino is a place that cares about beauty, playfulness, and welcoming public spaces. They encourage biking, yes, but they also invite people to slow down, smile, and engage with the city. More than that, they are a symbol of partnership between the city and one of its oldest community service organizations, and of the good that we can do when we work together in good faith. In closing, I simply ask that as you weigh your next steps on this issue, you hold in mind the very real joy and appreciation that we've heard from residents who have experienced these racks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Seema. And next, we have another group. Bob Pruitt, Susan Black, Jennifer Shirin, Padma Chari, Sean Gasparini, and Steve Vidobar. You are consolidating your time for up to 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Chow and City Council. My name is Robert Pruitt. I'm a member of the Cupertino Rotary and a member of the Cupertino Rotary Board, and I have today a letter from George Denise that I'd like to read to you. And George was actively involved in installing most of the bike racks that we've been talking about. And here is the letter from George. "Good evening. My name is George Denise. I live at 12121 Mellowood Drive, Saratoga, California. I'm retired now, but I was previously the Director of Operations and Sustainability for Oracle, and before that, I was the Managing Director and Global Account Manager for Operations and Sustainability for Adobe Systems. I'm a member of Cupertino Rotary, and I was one of the leads installing the bike racks, volunteering over 50 hours of my time in the process. I joined Cupertino Rotary because my family had a business in Cupertino for 15 years, the Ski Renter, which was at 10675 South Deansa Boulevard. So it made sense from both a business and social standpoint, and I liked the character of the club. I've been a volunteer all my life: Little League, soccer, scouting, Chamber of Commerce, Building Owners and Managers Association, Institute of Real Estate Management, Cornet Corporate Real Estate Network, et cetera. Rotary International is a service organization and a very successful one, but Cupertino Rotary stands out even against that backdrop, and Cupertino is a wonderful community. That's why I joined Cupertino Rotary. The Artistic Bike Racks program was first conceived by Seema Linskog. It was brought to the city over two years ago, discussed, designs developed, locations determined, all following the procedures laid out by the city. The final designs and locations were determined and approved by the city. The racks were fabricated by a company that has done literally thousands of these types of racks for hundreds of organizations and cities all across the country. The racks arrived, we coordinated their installation with the city, and we installed them. I was present and one of the leads for all but two of our approximately 20 workdays. It seemed like almost everyone who came by while we were installing them had to ask about them. Once we explained that they were artistic bicycle racks, and that it was a collaborative project between the Rotary Club and the city, people seemed to take great joy in that. The comments we heard were, "What a great project," and "I think they are just beautiful," and "Thank you so much for doing this." The day before the Fall Festival, while we were setting up for it, I saw a couple of little girls playing on the rack we installed in Memorial Park. They seemed to be having a good time, so I walked over to them and asked if I could take their pictures playing on the rack. The parents said yes, so I did. Then the mother asked me what it was. She said at first she thought it might be to play on, but then saw bicycles attached to it, so assumed it was a bicycle rack. I said, "It is a bicycle rack, but it is also art." And like art, it is whatever you want it to be. It is intended to be an artistic bicycle rack. It is a beautiful, colorful, somewhat whimsical work of functional art. It is meant to add to the beauty and practicality of our community. It is a place for people to secure their bikes where they are out, where they're out of the way, but where they can still keep an eye on them. It is also meant to protect the trees people have been attaching their bikes to because there were no racks. It is meant to facilitate people taking their bike rather than driving their car when appropriate. They are meant to be serious and function, and they are meant to be visually whimsical and fun. Others have talked about these things that I mentioned above. I would like to address a different point. Someone said that this park is supposed to be a memorial to those who have sacrificed for their country. I agree. They also seem to think that bright, colorful, beautiful bicycle racks somehow deter from that. I disagree, and this is something I feel very strongly about. I was in the Marine Corps Reserves from 1966 to 1971. My son was an officer in the Marine Corps from 2005 to 2011. My older brother was in the Navy from 1960 to 1964. My father was in the Army in the South Pacific from 1942 to 1945. He was part of the forces battling to free that part of the world, one island at a time. He contracted malaria, dysentery, dysentery, pyria, and he suffered from malnutrition, as did 65% of the soldiers he was with. At Guadalcanal, he was blown out of his foxhole. He was then evacuated to a hospital tent, which was also blown up. At the end of the war, he spent three months in a hospital in Texas recuperating. My father had been a photographer, an artist, and a cartoonist before the war. In the midst of the horror of war, he drew cartoons, making fun of some of the ironies of the war to entertain the troops around him and raise their spirits a little. That's one of the purposes of art, not doom and gloom, but to celebrate our brave citizens and enjoy the freedom they gave us. Every generation in my family has served in the military, going back to colonial times, not because we are part of some warrior class, far from it. We all have had careers unrelated to war and the military. We are simply trying to be responsible citizens, answering the call when our country needs us. I can't speak for everyone who is or was in the military, but I feel comfortable speaking on behalf of my family. We fought to preserve what we often call the American way of life. That includes taking our kids to the park, taking walks in the park, running in the park, practicing Tai Chi in the park, attending concerts in the park, and attending festivals in the park. And sometimes we play, and giggle, and laugh, and are raucous in the park. And some of our little ones learned to ride their bikes in the park because it is a safe place for them to do so. When they get older, sometimes they come to the park with their friends on their bikes, and sometimes they do ride too fast and aren't as careful as they should be. But there have been very few accidents, and they are safer here than they are on the street. After all, these are our kids. We are part of a greater community, and these are our community's kids. We want them to be safe, too. I don't believe the park is supposed to be a dark, somber sanctum. Memorial Park should be bright, and colorful, and fun, and full of laughter. That's what we fought for. The park is for everyone. Some ride bikes and like to be able to secure them when they are not riding them. The racks facilitate that, and they are fun, and they are beautiful. Thank you. Signed, George Denise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, and group. Next, we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. There are three, Peggy Griffin, Louise Sedadi, and San Rao. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Council, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I agree with Councilmember Wong that number 10 TBD, the ballot measure to protect our frontage retail needs to be elevated. If we let it sit there, it's going to take three years. If we can get it on the 2026 ballot, that would be preferable. We've got lots of projects already coming in that we may lose retail, and, you know, every bit hurts, and it impacts our finances. The other items, uh, item six on the city work program enhanced senior services. Step number 1.5 says share results, and it talks about sharing it with departments, but it doesn't mention sharing it with the council. I think the council is a very important part of sharing the results, and it needs to be added. Item number 13, county, City Hall retrofit and City Hall annex renovation, including the EOC. It needs to be broken out. It's a mishmash of timelines, and you're really hard to follow when everything is going to be done, and I feel like it's just procrastination. I think it needs to be clear and broken out in separate steps, the retrofit and the EOC. And, uh, my concern about the TBD list in general is that it's not in priority order, and it sounds like if you have free time, you can just pick an item without any kind of prioritization by the council, and that is my concern. Um, the other item that I, I, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Louise Sedadi, followed by San Rao. Welcome, Louise.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Dear Honorable Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and City Council members, over a two-year process, the Artistic Bike Racks project led by the Cupertino Rotary has been discussed and approved via the proper process involving the Rotary, the Bike Ped Commission, and the city staff, including the Director of Public Works and the City Manager. The artistic bike racks have now been installed, enjoyed, and appreciated by the community at large, increasingly by the hundreds. In discussing the possibility of new rules and procedures for installing bike racks in the future, please do not make the new rules and procedures retroactive. Please do not make the new rules and procedures too limiting, draconian, or negative. Do not spend city money and staff time undoing the over 300 hours spent in the last two years discussing, coordinating, and installing the current bike racks. Please do not allow a couple of repetitive voices lead you to undo two years' worth of work now or in the future. The city parks are for everyone and should be inclusive rather than exclusive. Instead of being negative and exclusive, our city needs to be positive and inclusive. The city does not have extra monies and staff time to undo the work done over the last two years. Undoing the honest work done in good faith by the Rotary, the city staff, and the community sends a very negative message to the Rotary, the community at large, and the city. A precedent of uninstalling work done over a two-year process period following process casts a shadow over all current Cupertino infrastructure and projects. Please support the citywide desire by the overwhelming majority of Cupertino residents to leave the current artistic bike racks installed, as they are for the community to enjoy. Since they have been installed, hundreds of residents, including walkers, parents, children, bikers, young, middle, and older adults, have already expressed their joy and appreciation for the functionality, joy, art, and for the functionality, joy, art, and fun from the artistic bike racks already installed throughout Cupertino. Thank you for keeping all this in mind during your discussions.
Thank you, Louise. Next, we have San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore.
You didn't put your hand up?
Sorry, I heard someone speaking over me. If I could have the timer start again, please. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members, speaking on behalf of myself only. A few comments on the TBD list. I agree with the staff recommendation to remove items, so having reviewed the list, I think there are a number of items on this list that staff recommends removing from the list, and I fully support and endorse the same. I think the list is excessively large, and the existing CWP is already excessively large, and this list and the existing CWP list could really be pruned down significantly in order to focus on a few things that will actually help move the needle for the city. And as you look at items to focus on, I urge you to focus on things around public safety and quality of life. I'm sure all of you have to drive through the city, and you're seeing the amount of red light violations in the city. It is a source of serious safety concerns, especially as we get off, as we are driving on Stevens Creek eastbound or westbound, and we have drivers coming off of two eighty or off of eighty-five and coming out of the DNs, so there's a number of red light violations there, Cynthia, the DNs and Stevens Creek intersection, and it is really unsafe. And I fear for a number of our senior drivers as well, who may not have the reflexes to watch out for some of these late exits out of the red lights. So please prioritize the red light cameras in Cupertino. This is something you can do. Other cities have done it. I also urge you to pass a resolution seeking to include the city of Cupertino in AB 645, so that speeding cameras can be implemented in Cupertino, and we can enforce speed limits. I see the money being spent on other projects such as traffic studies to lower speed limits. The problem we have is people don't follow speed limits that exist. If you lower it, people will still not follow your speed limit. So what we need is technology to really enforce the limits that we have, not just lowering limits that nobody will enforce. So please prioritize public safety in that space. Likewise, please prioritize quality of life. There are a few items here around protecting parkland, and that is critical. If there are ways that you can protect parkland, whether that needs a ballot measure or not, I will leave it to you to think about. Perhaps there's existing laws that allow you to protect parkland, but we need to make sure our parkland is safe, so that there are no attempts to port public-private partnerships and reclaim parkland. On that same note, I'm asking you to put a ballot measure to protect any attempts to reclaim public right of way, and this is something that the city has continually changed its story on. There was supposed to be a ground lease on Mary Avenue, and suddenly magically that disappeared and became a sale. When and how that changed was not a decision of dice. Then the sale was supposed to be without vacating the right of way, so you're actually setting a road and a parking lot, and nobody understood when and how it was vacated. So there's a number of discrepancies. There was a consent calendar item to approve negotiation, and suddenly that vanished. So this is continually a changing story, and it's changing back channel. So please put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay, thank you. First of all, the Mary Avenue item will be on the council agenda tomorrow. The negotiator item is there. It will be a study session where we will be able to answer all the questions the public have raised, and there hasn't been any change in our story because the city has not shared the process we are planning to do in terms of vacation of public right of way, and we will be sharing the process that city have in mind for that project. So please do not make up things that's not there. And tomorrow, it will be on the agenda. You can ask all the questions you want. Anything that's not clear, you are welcome to ask them. So anyone else, any other question we need to answer? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So when we're looking at the TBD list, where do we draw the line between something being a city work program item and, like, looking at the review of the City Council Procedures Manual, the recommendation is to remove this item from the list once it's been heard by the city council? So is that being recommended to? I would assume that this doesn't mean that we're recommending to have it as a city work program item, that it's simply going to be agendized, and that...
That's correct, Vice Mayor. So if it says that staff recommends removing after council has heard an item, that means it stays on TBD until we've agendized it. And typically, the way the TBD items are handled is, you know, two council members, as I mentioned, can add items to TBD, but then it's the mayor and the city manager, when we review the agendas, then we place the TBD items based on where and when it can come forward.
Okay, so if I look at item one, this one, staff recommends removing the item once it's been heard by the city council. So could we then, are you, do you suggest that we do a straw poll on each one of these items, or that we...
Actually, I have something to propose. Can, so may I?
Please do.
I actually would propose to remove item one, two, four. I think there is, we had a need for item one when there was resistance to share documents from close session. That does not exist anymore. And for item two, three, four, also, number four was a request by a resident, but that resident does not seem to be pushing for that. So I think we'll can just, I think one, two, four can be removed. And then I would recommend item ten and eleven to be added to the current year work program to be completed by July 2025, if possible, including the study session and possible implementation, and potentially a ballot measure. I'm not sure. I would hope to look at the cost, the advantage of having a ballot measure or not, but we will learn more later.
Mayor, you did mean 2026, not 2025.
Oh, 2026, yeah, sorry. And then item seventeen, eighteen on BlackBerry Farm, I believe, the answers have been provided or will be provided, so they can be removed. And the rest, I would just follow staff recommendation. And then I would propose to add item twenty-five. That's the item proposed by Councilmember Wong for an infomemo on resident versus non-resident structure, justification for fees, preferential access. I think we will just keep there. If the infomemo is satisfactory, we can remove that next time. And then I would propose we remove the sign ordinance from the work program, since we're not sure the scope. I think that takes some time to think about that, and it's not really that urgent. I think we do want to make some changes in the sign ordinance, but that we need to think deeper about the scope. And I think it makes sense to separate the retrofit of City Hall and the annex and the EOC as two separate items in the work program for clarity. So that's the list I have. That's my motion. I can show the list.
Thank you, mayor. Can you share your screen?
Yeah.
Mayor, just a quick question. If we're accepting most of the staff recommendations, so are you taking two separate votes on the TBD and the work program?
I think we just take one. It's just a direction.
Just one, okay.
Yeah. So this is the list I mentioned.
Okay.
It's not sharing?
We're not seeing it.
Um, okay. Yes, so maybe let me, just, this is the retail one. That's the park one.
More second?
Yeah.
So you, mayor, you do have a second? I've just seconded your motion.
Okay, thank you.
In, in practice, we actually have pretty much separated out the City Hall and the annex item because we've already, correct, we've already moved the Torrey Avenue project ahead, and then we're going to be hearing City Hall within the next few weeks.
Okay.
Open for any discussion or supplement or friendly amendment?
I do. I do have a question before I introduce a friendly amendment or suggest a friendly amendment. When does it, when does a project get to a point where it should be city council approval versus staff approval? I think the bike racks is a great example. There will be other types of projects like this where discretion is made by staff or discretion is made by council. Do we have a test or way to determine that?
I think Councilmember Wong, that's, you know, that's definitely a question we can talk for a while. But in short, I would say, once council provides direction on what you want done, you know, typically, there is some discretion on how the implementation works. Of course, that's not a blanket answer for all projects. Some of them are, you know, large enough that we would want to bring to council early on before, you know, we make too much progress. The City Work Program is a good list of projects that will have a lot of visibility on them, and council will be aware of it each step of the way. But it is, it's a question that a lot of council and city managers kind of grapple with, right? Like, where do the lines blur? And certainly happy to talk with you a little bit more on that.
I give an example. I don't want to pick on the Rotary Club here. Let's say, like, the Buffalo Club decides they want to put a tiki hut, you know, everywhere in the city, and they go through the process of working with the city, and the departments all agree, and all the stakeholders agree, but council is not aware of it for whatever reason. And it gets to the point where they get installed, right? Like, things like that do happen, and so, I don't know. I mean, maybe in a future work plan, trying to figure out where that line is in terms of categories of projects might help people. Probably not for this discussion, then, based on your answer, so, but I just think it's something we should be considering in the future.
Definitely. It's a good discussion point for council, and we'll...
In the future.
We'll talk about that, yeah.
Thank you. I do have some question about the process for the bike rack also, but that's here from Councilmember Fu and First.
So I wanted to clarify which version of item ten we're talking about here. Are you intending this to be a ballot measure or a zoning change?
I think zoning change was a potential consideration for ballot measure, depending on the cost or whether we need it.
Okay, because I would certainly support a zoning change. I think that there are very good things in the Village Center Master Plan from Sunnyvale. We actually employ some of this in Cupertino already, already in certain places. You'll note, for example, that in 2019, when council changed the zoning at Valco, that there was one piece of the parcel that was rezoned just for housing in order to satisfy the housing element. Similarly, when we went through the rezonings in the last housing element cycle, at least three sites have partial site rezonings. The one that I'm most familiar with is one piece of St. Jude's, for example, that is now zoned for housing, and the rest of it is still quasi-public. And effectively, what the Village Center Master Plan does is exactly that type of thing. It's, you know, portions of parcels are zoned a particular way. It's not the entire parcel. I think it's creative. I think it's a good way of exploring things. I'd suggest as well that, given that we are going to have to find additional sites for the shortfall in the housing element, not just because of the upcoming Toll Brothers project, but in the future because of the new Valco submission, that we should probably fold those two efforts in together and get out ahead of it. There's a time clock that will start the moment that we have a shortfall. That shortfall will happen probably this month with the approval of the Toll Brothers project, when we're in the negative by two units on moderate income, and that'll be six months. So I think that, given that the number, that the sites that are most likely to be attractive for inclusion in that process are probably also sites that have some sort of existing retail use on them, that it would be good to put those two efforts together so that we don't lose a lot of retail, and that we can be creative about it and be in control of that process early. Would you be willing to accept that?
I'm not sure. The shortfall, I think I did ask the staff, do we have any estimate of our performance for housing element?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be short by two units the moment that we approve Toll Brothers.
But we will have, I think, another project coming up.
And that'll make it worse.
So, okay, Council, Vice Mayor?
I would like us to receive an infomemo about this item from the city attorney's office, so that we understand it and have the statutory references, so that it's clear.
So I don't, I don't even...
I'm sorry.
Should we amend this? I'm thinking about the friendly amendment is, item ten, we consider a way to protect retail, but possibly, as we maybe reason a mixed use side to protect one portion to retail, maybe we do upzone to compensate for our loss in housing element.
Yes.
So we consider that. We are not saying we have to do that, right? Just like the ballot major, consider that. It's not saying we have to do that, but that's, consider that if we need it, and if we need it, we have, we're on the way.
If you want to consider a ballot measure, that's fine. I think it'll be preempted by state law, but I don't know that any kind of, you know, additional memo is necessary from the city attorney's office. We have the staff report from November the 12th for the Planning Commission that lays it out all very clearly, that we will be in the negative on our moderate-income housing. And the moment that Valco, which just submitted a modification, is approved, that's another roughly two-hundred-and-fifty units that will disappear from our low income, so we will go into the negative there, too.
I thought the HCD only counts permitted units, not approved.
That's your production. You have to maintain zoned capacity. You have to maintain zoned capacity, know that loss, in every single category. We'll be in the negative.
On the second, do you support?
I still would want to hear from our city attorney's office on this matter, and I'd like to further understand the Hanover Project on Finch and Stevens Creek Boulevard, what impact that is going to have as well.
I think it's okay to say potential housing site on the item here until we have more information, right?
Well, I think you're looking at a retail item, and this is a separate issue, and I wouldn't combine them together until we have further information about that.
So...
I think how you had it originally was, was correct.
What's the other item? Item twenty. So the friendly amendment was item twenty, traditional housing element sites. So you would like to get more information? And then, once we have that, we could consider combining twenty with ten, right? But not at this time. That's what you are thinking.
Um, Mayor, if I may just offer clarification. So if, if it's, if item 20 is written as is and it gets adopted, based on staff recommendation, it moves on to the work program item. It does sort of closely relate to the item 10.
Yeah, I think it's a timeline, the issue of timeline.
Yeah, and also like, you know, if you, if we want options for expanding housing element sites, do we want to do, and then, you know, do we bring information to you first, which could go with this item 10? It just, maybe, maybe Councilmember Fuwen, you could clarify in terms of what were you hoping to?
Yeah, no, I just, I think that they both go together. And when we are in the position of unfortunately not being able to make the declaration on our net loss and say, we have enough residual capacity, I would like us to be able to tell HCD, we're already undertaking to rezone sites and make sure that we have sufficient capacity. And we know that once Valco is approved, that will be an even bigger problem. This is not one that's going to go away. There are also other housing element sites that have lower capacities that are planned on them. That will exacerbate the problem. I'd encourage everyone to go back and, and watch the, the Planning Commission meeting of November the 12th. It's pretty illuminating on the topic. And we owe it to ourselves to be out ahead of this, not chasing it. We only get six months. I think we should do it well. These things just go naturally together. And we could certainly have a study session defining the scope. That way, everyone can feel comfortable with it. But I think maybe getting the ball rolling and being able to tell HCD, like I said, that we've, we're, we're working on a plan, so don't panic. And to be able to tell the public, also, don't panic. Because the last thing that I wanted to see us happen, to have happen here, is that, you know, our certification gets revoked. That would be a really bad outcome.
I think we, we can add it to the work program. It doesn't mean, adding it means that we are starting to look at that, right? It doesn't mean we have to rezon the sites. But then, by the time we get the info memo, maybe there is a need that we would move up the timeline. So what do you think, uh, I, second?
I, I'm greatly concerned about the developers' projects which they have been submitting, and what their motivation was, hearing this.
Yeah, the timeline is very
Convenient.
Conveniently timed well to screw us.
Not sure I'd say it that way, but
It is.
The sentiment is there.
Sent, submitted right before Thanksgiving to take full advantage of Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas holiday. And, yeah, so, but there, there's nothing we can do about that. So should we add to the work program as, um, for now, getting information? Then we can move on, we can move up the timeline once we know the urgency, right?
A quick comment, Mayor, if you could say, uh, give the staff a leeway to study the session, to, to have a study session without restricting, restricting it to potential ballot measure. We would say, for number 10. We would say a study session, reviewing options to protect frontage retail.
Yeah, it's, it's, it will be a study session first. I think, I think it's, uh, it's study session, number 10 is, study session regarding potential. So it's a study.
So that's, that's the
Once we study, maybe we will decide which direction, ballot major or not, like, yeah. So it is a study session to find out.
And, quick point of order. I know we have a motion in place, but do we need to extend time?
All right. It's 10:30. Um, so let's extend to 11 o'clock?
10:45.
You think we can get down 10:45?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
I actually have a question about the bike rack I would like to ask staff. Okay. 10:45? Not 11? Let's just do 11. Can we just, just do 11 o'clock?
So moved, Moore?
Okay, that's the motion for, to extend to 11 o'clock.
Second.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor, was it, were you the mover, or was Vice Mayor the mover?
Vice Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Fuwen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
I reluctantly aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye. I've suffered four hours of secondary smoke here, but let's go for it.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so, the work, add to the work program to get info memo first, and like that? Would that be acceptable?
That's acceptable, thank you.
As, as long as that's, that's speedier than what we've got, fine.
So it will be an item that we watch, and then we will get an update, and
I, I, through the mayor, I just really want to underscore the importance of this and of not repeating the mistakes of the past. We, we did not take the housing element process seriously enough from the very beginning. And I want to make sure that as we are forced to reckon with additional sites, that we do this better this time. We have an opportunity. I think we should take it.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. I do have some question about the bike rack process. Can I ask Chad about it?
Chad, would you come up to answer a question about the bike racks?
Yeah, I think taking Councilmember Wong's question about the approval process. Just wondering, should the, the artistic bike pack, bike rack was initiated by Rotary Club two years ago? Is that right?
So, um, the original, is this on? So the original bike rack project was a city work program. It was initiated about two years ago. That, that bike rack project was one of the Bike Ped Commission's recommendations. If you recall, I think it was that year, every commission had kind of a project that they were recommending. So the Bike Ped Commission recommended the bike rack project, and City Council had approved it. Throughout that year, we began talking with the Bike Ped Commission about it. And at some point, the Bike Ped Commission was made aware of an artistic concept for bike racks that the Rotary was considering. So staff engaged the Rotary about this potential for
That's two years ago still?
It's about two years ago, yes.
Okay.
So staff engaged the Rotary about that. Part of the, the bike rack project that the Bike Ped Commission was also focusing on was trying to get racks close to the front door of stores and not out in the public rideaway. So staff felt that that was an appropriate use of the Rotary's ability was to reach out to the businesses, because they work with a lot of businesses, to get that permission to put it next to the front rack, the, the front doors of, of the stores, the racks next to the front door. As that project progressed, they also wanted to expand that concept to look at other properties such as parks. And so we proceeded to look at those options as well. So it's kind of a roundabout way to answer your question, but
Yeah, I, I think I'm still fuzzy on, so initially council approved that we would like to have bike rack, but that's regular bike rack. Somewhere along the line, Rotary proposed artistic bike rack, but they get to choose which vendor to use. Because I find there are many, I think, much nicer artistic bike rack that actually look like bike rack. People won't confuse it by thinking it's a play structure. Or I think one of them is just like a loop. It doesn't even look like a bike rack. I, I, if, I, I would not know that's supposed to be a bike rack. So, and some, I, I don't want to undo anything that's already done. However, I, it's important to point out what wasn't working in the past process. That this somehow, it's a good, I, it's well-intentioned, however, because it's proposed by a group and with a specific design, that design, it's artistic, but didn't go through Arts Commission. And then the city didn't have an opportunity to decide which artistic bike rack we think will be suitable. And so that's the kind of process issue that
I don't have any further information on that. There's a lot of stuff that was happening through various conversations. I don't have all that information, but I'm just, that, that's how this was initiated.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Mayor, through the mayor?
Councilmember Wong, or who is?
Oh, thank you. I, I don't know who's
And then Vice Mayor, yeah. Okay.
Okay, through, uh, through the mayor, I think the question really is a governance question. Uh, the question I would also want to know is, how many folks recused themselves that were Rotarians that made the vote along the way? Because this could happen in other projects as well, and it's just more governance. So, but, but let's save that for another point in time. I, I would like to move on the motions that we have in place. And if you're going to make a modification on this one, on the bike racks, I would actually vote to keep that actually on the TBD list, not take it off. Um, so you can come back and explore this issue later.
The, the future process is on the TBD list that we will explore, um, yeah.
The staff's recommendation is to remove it at the moment? We don't have a replacement for the future process?
No, no. The staff recommendation is remove after it's heard, so it will be heard.
Okay, this isn't, this isn't the hearing. Understood.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. So I would like to have an informational memo outlining the dates of all the Bike Ped Commission meetings which considered the bike rack project. And when this does move forward, I, I do think we need to look at our donation policy and branding, along with the, because this, um, the agreement kind of blurred the lines between our current donation policy and, um, the, the ability to, to brand things and then have council approval for an object. Because we paid the Rotary for each of these racks. I believe it was $1,000 per rack, and then it has the branding on top of it, so, plus the, the MOU was conducted between staff and the Rotary. So it wasn't, it, it never rose to the occasion that the council would weigh in on it. And I do think there's a good point that when it's called, you know, artistic bike racks, that since we do have the Arts and Culture Commission, that they would have an opportunity to weigh in on that. We do have a kind of complicated style issue with Memorial Park, with the, the gingerbread gazebo, the, the stone lanterns which are there, and the color scheme which our future consultant will be choosing for fixtures within the park. And we're going to be having the solar structure, which is very close proximity. So I think design and styling-wise, it's going to be a challenge to have all of that look cohesively. Color scheme-wise, you've, it's, it's going to be a challenge. And it was made, it was complicated by the addition of this, this bright object, which doesn't sit well with the gazebo, it doesn't sit well with the, the stone lantern. And it's a question for how that new solar panel structure is going to coordinate there. So those are the, the kinds of things that make it more challenging for, for your department for how that's going to be designed, which is going to happen sometime next year, that that'll be installed. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, just to clarify, you're asking for an info memo. May I offer, um, so item 16 and 22 are both on the TBD right now that we are recommending. We bring it forward to council. Would you like us to bring information through those items? Or would you prefer a separate information, informational memo?
Separate.
Sixteen, pardon?
And 22.
I think it's just a separating memo.
They should be separate.
Yeah, I did, this should be separate.
Completely separate, okay.
They, they should be separate.
Something that's already approved, although, so we just want to learn about the current approval process.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
And actually, I do have another question. So first, I'd like to clarify. I say the fish, fish bike rack is lovely by it on its own. It's, my opinion, it's out of place, right next to the gazebo, which is supposed to be a Japanese garden-style design. And if we install a wooden structure that's a bike rack, it's suitable. Fish rack is out of place. Just my personal opinion. But being lovely doesn't mean it's lovely everywhere. I do have a question about the installation. Did the volunteers actually install these bike racks, not the city staff? Is that allowed under our labor law? Because I remember when I served on the Cupertino Union School District, when parents wants to volunteer, install something on the drive, on the parking lot, they are not allowed to. Only a union labor, labor with, with insurance is allowed to do any such construction work on public property.
The work was
We don't have such rule?
The work was done by volunteers, but there was insurance provided.
Oh, by the Rotary Club?
Correct.
Okay. But then, we don't have any union agreement to not allow volunteers to do such work?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Okay, um, we are ready to vote?
I just wanted to make a
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted
Councilmember Fuwen, so Mohan, Councilmember Fuwen?
Me first, or you first? Who's first?
Okay, Councilmember Fuwen probably raised her hands first, so Oh, okay.
No, I just wanted to make a quick comment, Mayor, that all these discussions or the future intent to come up with a policy doesn't take away from the extraordinary work that this group of volunteers did to place these bike racks in, in the various parks. And regardless of whether some people think it's not aesthetic or it's not beautiful, and I, and I've said this before, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. If, it's subjective, and I'm, I'm not sure my opinion of aesthetic is the same as yours. So I, I'd rather not make decisions based on aesthetics. We had a group of volunteers who, who knew what they were getting into. When I took office, one of the first things they showed me was the designs of these bike racks, and I thought they were so creative and artistic and just the kind of thing that the city needed. So I do, do not agree that it doesn't fit into the park, because I, I think it's, it's funny and it's fun, and it reflects many elements that make, that promote the quality of life in Cupertino.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Fuwen?
Yeah, I just want to align my comments with Councilmember Mohan. And I sincerely hope that whatever comes out of this, and if there is any kind of policy change process in the future, that it doesn't chill volunteerism. I think it's really important to the civic life of the city and to the basic fact that we aren't that large of a city. We don't have a huge workforce. We are very much reliant on our partnerships with civil society. This is one of our key partnerships. And so whatever we do in terms of potential policy change, I hope that we will be keeping that in mind.
Yeah, thank you so much. I do want to express my appreciation for Rotary Club. You really is a very, a club with a lot of You really is a very, a club with a lot of enthusiastic and very talented volunteers. So thank you for everything that you do in different area, inside the city and outside of the city. Not liking the bike racks or where it's located. Really is just, I think, whenever it comes to public property, we are installing something on a public land that the public will use. We do want to be conscious of whether we have that process that's fair to everyone. For this one, only Bike Ped considers that, considers it. They have a different view. When Art Commission, like they would consider this kind of project. So, yeah, so that's why we think maybe more, more eyes on it will make it even a better project. So next time, we will have project that we can improve the process. So we have projects that really is loved by everyone. So for the info memo, that, we don't need to include that in the motion, right? But I do hope that we include the location and photos of the racks. That would be great, yeah. Okay, so let's just vote on the motion. Do I need to share it again?
Please.
Yeah. So I, info memo, I, it wasn't a part of the motion. Could be if you want. Yeah. Oh, is it shared? Okay. Is that good? Okay, and let's vote.
Councilmember Fuwen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion as amended carries unanimously.
Okay, now the meeting is at Jordan.